Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, March 10th, 2025 City Council meeting. Please join me in saluting the flag.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Agenzio.
Here.
Here, Councilor Cogliandro.
Here.
Here, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guerino-Suaya.
Here.
Here, Councilor Haas.
Here.
Here, Councilor Hermio.
Here.
Here, Councilor Kelly.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Nowoselski.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Absent.
Absent. And Council President Silvestri.
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of February 24th.
So move.
All in favor, all oppose? So order.
Calendar item number three, communication from the mayor relative to the proposed inter-ministerial RECC agreement between Revere, Winthrop and Chelsea.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. President, Honorable Counsel. I know that you probably have read the agreement in front of you, and I just wanted to give a little bit of backstory, although I'm pretty sure that there's a few councilors on this board that have an even deeper understanding of the backstory than I do, that have been involved in city government for the last 15 to 20 years. But what you have in front of you is an inter-ministerial agreement between the cities of Revere, Winthrop and Chelsea. Currently, the city of Revere operates its regional 911 with the city of Winthrop. When the city of Revere started this regional 911 somewhat approximately 15 years ago, the full intention at that time was to have a three communities in this regional 911. Really, what it did was it made the dollars and cents work, but it was also built in a way so that it could serve three municipalities. Obviously, at one point in time, due to just differences of opinion and/or potentially politics and just a different thought process, Chelsea decided at one point not to join the region. So for the last 15 years, we've been kind of chasing and trying to get Chelsea back in because it really makes the most sense. When you have a regional 911 through the state, it's Tier One, Two and Three communities. The city of Revere and Winthrop operate currently at a Tier Two community. So when it comes down to state money and state grants, a Tier One community obviously would be eligible for much more. And we are looking, as everyone is aware, the regional 911 operates out of the Revere Police Department right now. It is overgrowing its space from when the Revere Police Department first opened, and we are in the process of rebuilding and putting a new regional 911 at the old McKinley School. It'll be fully refurbished, state-of-the-art, it'll also be seismically reinforced because if there's ever a hurricane or catastrophic event, we want to make sure our 911 communications and call center operate, and that's when you need them most. By bringing a community like Chelsea in, the city would be eligible to receive upwards of $15 million in grant funding, as opposed to being a Tier Two community would only be eligible for upwards of $8 to $9 million a year. One of the other great savings with reduced by spreading out the overhead is the city's annual assessment by 911 would be split between now three communities rather than just two, and it goes by call volume. Chelsea and Revere have a very similar call volume, so spreading out that cost between three communities, again, reducing redundancies, creating efficiencies, will add more money to the bottom line when it comes to public safety in our community. And one of the other major conversation points by all three communities is making sure that we don't have loss in response time. When you call 911, that's exactly what you do, you call. And currently, they answer the phone on Revere Beach Boulevard. That same call taker will be working in a new facility with state-of-the-art equipment, state-of-the-art facilities and more space at just a new site. And the same thing goes for Chelsea and Winthrop. All of those calls go through a call center, they're all trained. We have a really wonderful director of our call center, Whitney Morgan. She has been doing a terrific job since she took over that role just a few years ago and has really brought our Revere 911 or our regional 911 up to one of the highest standards. And state 911 will reassert that. They will tell you how well the city of Revere and Winthrop have done, to the point where they know that bringing in another community like Chelsea will just continue to make it even better. So I'm here to ask that you take a look at the agreement. I know that most of you already read through it. It is very cut and dry, it is very similar to the current agreement we have, and we would just be bringing Chelsea in. We also have our public safety officials from the city of Revere and Chelsea, and Winthrop, the town manager of Winthrop was unable to be here tonight, but he did, of course, supports this whole heartily. I brought my colleague, my good friend from Chelsea, the city manager, who also wanted to express his support for this, to the point where the city of Chelsea Council voted 11 to nothing just two weeks ago in favor of joining this agreement. So I'm hoping that you will support this tonight. It is a big deal for the city of Revere and it's long overdue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Fidel, would you like to say some words?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. I thank you for having me. My name is Fidel Maltese, I'm the city manager in Chelsea. I was trained, and I know everything I know from Tom Ambrosino, who was a proud mayor of Revere for many years, and from Tom, I learned the true benefit of this endeavor, right? This has been a conversation that Chelsea, Revere and Winthrop have had for a long, long time. I know that it was something that Jay Ash was on board with, and Tom certainly was on board with as well. When I started in my role in January of last year, it was one of the first things we got to work on, but as you can imagine, there was a lot of selling that we had to do internally to our staff and our community. I am very proud that our city council voted on this proposal 11-0, right? And we're working through the growing pains, but I know that this is going to be a benefit for all the communities, for Chelsea and Revere and for Winthrop as well. Thank you.
Thank you. City councilors? Councilor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, thanks so much for being here. Fidel, thanks so much for being here. I know this has been something that's been in the works for quite some time, and when you hear names like Mayor Ambrosino and Jay Ash mentions, that's, this has been something that's been in the works and something that the community's hoped for some time now. But I want to thank the city of Chelsea for joining and the town of Winthrop. I don't think Tony's here, but this is a great partnership. Anytime you talk about the grant funding, the split, the three communities split, and more money for public safety, it's a huge win for not only Revere but for Chelsea and Winthrop as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Janino.
May I? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've had the opportunity to work with the REC over the years from day one, watched them grow, watched them hit the hurdles up and down, back and forth. I think Chelsea would be a nice addition to the current program we're running right now, and Whitney is doing an excellent job managing Revere and Winthrop at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Zambudo.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, and this is near and dear to my heart. You know, when I came to this council, it was with the hope to build a police station, and we struggled to get there, and we finally did. And this is such a big get, I want to honor the mayor for this because, you know, first of all, when I'm against him, I'm very vocal, so when I'm for him, I want to be even more vocal, because this is such a big get. I was for the regional 911 way back, and there's still some high-ranking retired public officials that don't speak to me or barely speak to me about it, because the way it's sometimes looked at is like a, I don't want to use a vocal word, but a contest, and it was thought that this would hurt manpower in each department and so forth and so on. But we always wanted these three cities, and this is, there was an emergency management guy in Chelsea for many years, an old friend of mine, who fought us tooth and nail to get this, and I am so thrilled that this kind of an effort, the mayor has really done the city solid and the city manager of Chelsea, this is a great get for all of us. This is such a big, big thing, it's going to improve the safety of the city in a more fiscally responsible way, and I can't give more kudos to the mayor for getting this done. This is, this is a really wonderful get, and I'm proud of you, I'm proud of your administration and your administration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Nowoselski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, all I can say to a friend from Chelsea, if you can get guys on the Chelsea City Council to vote 11-0, which include Leo Robinson and Calvin T. Brown, this has to be a good program. They are good guys, they love Chelsea, and, you know, they love working with the other cities and towns between Revere and Winthrop, and, you know, I'm calling this the North Suffolk 911, you know, because it's not, it's not the Boston, we can't include all of Suffolk County, but just for what we have and the funding that we're going to get for this in the future is unbelievable. We have an older building that we've all been screaming about for the last 10 years, and finally, we're going to get some funding to make things happen in that building, not only the 911, but also with the school department and a few other things that we could put in the building. But I'm looking forward to it. It's a win-win-win for everybody. So I encourage the rest of my colleagues to endorse this 100% and make this move along. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Hermio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the city manager. Welcome to North Chelsea. I know we've heard over the last year a lot about 400 years this, 400 years that, well, you know, 400 years for all of us, right? So nice to have you back at home. And just had some quick questions, really excited about the potential to expand our public safety apparatus here. Just want to make sure that we're going to continue to provide the same strong benefits to the workers that are going into the call center, that they have continued access to a bargaining agent, et cetera, et cetera.
Mr. President, through you to the Councilor, General Miller. The agreements will be in place, they are still going to be well represented by the union, we have guaranteed everyone's positions, we've guaranteed the rate, the highest rate that they would receive, there wouldn't be any pay cuts, and it is going to bolster the entire staff, because as we've all seen over the last four to five years, staffing challenges in positions like this have been difficult. So when you are regionalizing and bringing more, more communities under one roof, you're able to really use the best of the best, and that's going to help make sure that we retain the best, we have the best environment, and we're able to pay the most competitive wages. So those will all be, those are all in place and will continue to be in place.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate that, and that sounds great. I think that when we can continue to provide, especially for folks who work under a lot of high stress, a good wage and the whole nine, it's going to enhance our public safety here in the city of Revere, in the city of Chelsea and the town of Winthrop, so really excited to hear about that, and thanks for bringing this forth.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Guerino-Suaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, city manager Fidel, for bringing this forth, and it's been a long time coming. I'm all about collaboration, and this will help bring more funding to our policing and our fire and all the safeties that we need to protect our neighborhoods, and I really appreciate all the work you put into this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor McKenna.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations, Mayor Keefe. I know four mayors for you tried to get this going, and they couldn't. And congratulations to Chelsea, Fidel. And I just want to say one thing, you don't have to change McKinley School to make it hurricane-proof, because that building's not going to go anywhere. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Agenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mayor Keefe. This is a great win for, it's in Ward Four that McKinley School has stood idle for years. The neighbors are constantly asking me when something's going to be done there. I think this will alleviate their fears, and one question, is the school department going to be a piece of this also still?
Mr. President, through you to the councilor. A portion of the building will be used for early childhood education. The school department is supporting it with approximately $6.9 million in ester funds that they have left, so that'll be about 15,000 square feet will be a school for early childhood education, over 200 seats, half-day and potentially full-day. About 13,000 to 14,000 square feet will be the right wing, the new wing of the building will be dedicated towards the new regional 911, and the basement of the building, which is eligible for up to $15 million in state 911 grants. And the basement of the building, as of right now, we have the $2 million in food hub funding as long as it doesn't get pulled back, and that's the hopes. If it doesn't get pulled back, we'll be able to use that for a region, oh, I'm sorry, a city's kind of food hub incubator food space. That is the intention, that's how we're designing it right now. If that $2 million in funding gets pulled back for potential reasons, as we're seeing what's happening in the world right now or the country, then we would probably turn that into office space and move over some administrative space, whether it's the parking department or other satellite office space that we're currently paying rent for.
Thank you very much, and I just want to say congratulations to Fidel. Fidel and I both come from a public works background, we've known each other for a while, so, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for being here tonight, both of you. I think this is great for so many reasons, for the rehab, for the funding, for so many reasons, but I did just want to just make sure that the level of service, the quality of service that we're going to be providing to our residents is going to stay at an optimum level and that we will control that. So if there are ever any problems or things like that, we will have that level of control, and it wouldn't be taken away from us, and I think the answer is yes, but I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Mr. President, thank you, and Council Kelly, I agreed. We always want to make sure we maintain the highest level of service, especially when it comes to calling for, you know, life-changing service. And we have a, we have a wonderful director, her name's Whitney Morgan, she's dealing with a family member tonight, and she would be happy to support this, of course, she's very supportive of this. But they train ad nauseam, and they hire, they do hire the best that they can. As you know, as mentioned earlier, sometimes staffing levels for $25 or $26 a job, you know, you want to make sure you get the best, so more often, they won't hire someone that's not qualified, and they will run into things like overtime to make sure that they're keeping and retaining the best staff. So by bringing in a large group from another city, it's going to just bolster that level and making sure that each city, so Chief Bright, I'm sorry, Chief Cullen and Chief Callahan and the fire chief and police chief in Winthrop and Chelsea, they issue what the memorandum is for their service. So whatever Chelsea requires will get the call response that they want, however they want their calls to be taken, because every city's going to have slight specifics and changes, and each individual is trained on those capacities, and more often than not, a Chelsea call taker will stick to the Chelsea calls, a Revere call taker will stick to the Revere calls, and a Winthrop call taker will switch to the Revere. And then there's supervisors for each level. And then, of course, there's cross-training, because when there's staffing shortages or if there's bad inclement weather, you may get people that don't want to come in or something like that, like in any job, to make sure that there's overlap. But we're going to continue to maintain the highest quality of staff and continue to invest in training, and by having a state-of-the-art building with an actual training center, because currently at the Revere Police Department, it's less than 4,000 square feet. No, there's not really a training room, it's more of the police training room, and that's all they have. So to get up to 13,000 to 14,000 square feet with an exercise facility room, a training room, state-of-the-art, state-of-the-art equipment and space, it's just going to enhance the level of service for everybody.
Thank you, Councilor. Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you. Mr. Mayor, congratulations. Fidel, congratulations. The town of Winthrop, congratulations, because this is, this is a big deal. And when I realized how big of a deal was the excitement that was coming from the men and women of the Revere Police and Fire Department, the level of professionalism at the Chelsea 911 call center is, it was exciting for the men and women to hear in Revere and to bring them over and to get them working together and to get the best 911 call takers in the region making our calls is a good get, so congratulations, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk? Roll call.
Shall the city council approve the agreement by and among the city of Revere, the town of Winthrop and the city of Chelsea for the Metro North Regional Emergency Communications District and Dispatch Center? Councilor Agenzio.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Cogliandro.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guerino-Suaya.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Haas.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Hermio.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Kelly.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Nowoselski.
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Silvestri.
Yes.
Yes, the agreement has been approved.
Thank you.
Congratulations. So the second motion, communication tonight was from Tom from Economic, from the city planner. He's running a little late, so when he comes in, we'll be taking up that motion upon his arrival. Next, next motion.
Calendar item number five, Brian Dakin, senior project manager of Leftfield, will provide an update on the Revere High School building project.
Mr. Dakin, name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Brian Dakin, Leftfield, 1 High Street. Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, council. So I'll be relatively brief tonight. Last time we were here, we walked you through the design, the scope update for the high school project. At the time, we were knee-deep in estimating. At the conclusion of the design development phase, we had the construction manager, Consigli, and the design firm's estimator run parallel independent estimates. I'm happy to say that we reconciled those estimates on budget, in fact, slightly fraction of a percent under the target budget. As a result, we have submitted the design development package on budget. Nothing had to be removed, nothing was added from what was previously proposed. We have submitted it to MSBA on Friday, and we are proceeding into the 60% construction document phase. That phase will run through July, when we'll do this whole estimating to independent estimate process again to verify we're on budget before we start proceeding with construction of the building. In parallel to that, we are putting site demolition out to bid in the coming weeks. No new construction, as I think I previously noted, simply removal of the old clubhouse foundations and the dog track utilities under the dog track. We're going to be putting that out to bid in the coming weeks and intend to get that all bid wrapped up and approved by the school building committee by April, and at the latest, by the beginning of June, we will be starting the demolition phase. So when we get to that July-August timeframe, we'll reestimate everything, we'll make sure we're on budget. By then, we'll also be a lot closer to being complete with the permitting process. Quick update there is that we did submit the second, the major MEPA submission, the draft environmental impact report, a few weeks back. We expect to get a response and comments back from MEPA in the coming weeks. If any councilors are interested in reviewing that, I know, Council Kelly, you were, you were getting into the detail of that before. When we get that response, we could always meet, talk through it. So ultimately, when that 60% set is out, we estimate again, we show that we're on budget, that's the set of drawings, we'll be bidding the foundations and superstructure, the steel from. That'll allow us in August, September, to proceed with actual building construction, and final construction documents out by the end of the year. We'll bid the rest of the building off of that. Everything's held on schedule, as noted, we've held on budget. So I wanted to try to keep it brief, I know you folks have a lot of business to do, and I can take any questions from there.
Thank you, Mr. Dakin. City councilors? Councilor Agenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Dakin, did you go out and get estimates yet, or have estimates come in? I think-
Yeah. At, two independent estimates, both on budget.
Both on budget, and what's that budget?
The construction budget within the total project was 412 million. Both of the estimates were on the higher side of 411. So they're right on budget, the total project value is 493 million, that as well remains unchanged.
Okay, and how much of a contingency is built into that figure?
So there's, I should have printed out the estimate, but we still have a design and estimating contingency built into that, which, as the drawings get more complete, that contingency, which I think, Christie, do you know if we, 6%, I think is what we were holding on direct? So we have 6% of the direct costs we're holding for design contingency. There were some deep discussions about the potential impact of tariffs, we're carrying a tariff contingency in there that we don't know yet if, how much that might impact us, but that's built in there. And in the total project budget, we've maintained all of the outside contingencies that might need to cover, things like change orders if they come around, so all the contingencies remain intact.
Thank you very much. I'm on.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Cogliandro.
Thank you, Mr. President. Brian, thank you for being here. Since the last time you were here, I've had a lot of people ask me about one thing that was said. I've had a lot of people ask me about one thing that was said at the last meeting, which was that if we were, if the numbers came back and we were over budget, that we would make cuts to make sure that we were under budget or on budget. My question is, why don't we do that anyway, to save money?
That's, we, we meaning the whole project team, always create what's called a VE list, things that we might have to cut, things that we might have to refine when the estimates, if the estimates come in over budget. We have such a list. I think the short answer is that that's a good discussion for some of you folks to have with the school building committee. Ultimately, we're endeavoring to deliver the project under budget. Any of the contingencies or any budget that's not spent, comes back to the city, does not need to be borrowed, expended, but our goal is to deliver it under budget, but if we want to move the target budget down, I do think that's a discussion with the school building committee.
Okay, and also, I do have some, one, well, one question. After this is built out, there is a concern about how much the building's going to cost to maintain. There was a, something was brought up about the amount of money we're going to have to spend on additional staff, custodial staff, maintaining landscaping, things like that. Do we have any idea what that's going to cost to do that, because ultimately, that, you know, we have to pay for that, so.
It's something that we work with both on the site side for site maintenance and the building with the facilities director and the administration. I'd probably need to see if they could help me answer in terms of the, what are their plans for that? But our intent when we deliver these buildings with the design team is always to describe what it's going to take to maintain the building and the site. I just can't speak so specifically of what that means on the school side or the city side.
Thank you. And in regards to the MEPA process, you still believe we're going to be wrapped up by around August? I think that was one of the last things, the last time we asked about that.
I believe so, yes.
And just to reiterate, at that point, is when the MSBA will refund us what's refundable at that point, all in one lump sum?
Correct, and we actually did meet with the MSBA a few weeks ago to, with the city, with the mayor, superintendent, to sort of make sure they understand the strain that puts on Revere and other municipalities withholding that reimbursement, but yes, every dollar that we've spent since this project passed has been, will be reimbursable. We're tracking what it should be, once we're allowed to, we're going to submit that all to MSBA, and there'll be a big lump sum payment. After that, the reimbursements will happen monthly.
Thank you, Brian, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Guerino-Suaya. Councilor Haas.
Mine's working. Thank you, Mr. President. Brian, thanks so much for being here. I had a question more about design. I had a resident reach out about the garage and if there's going to be a pump station pit in the garage to, just in case of flooding like the Godfield has. The resident spoke very highly of the pit- The resident spoke very highly of the, the pit at the Garfield saying it saves lives, and they were just curious of this new, uh, design in the future, something like that. Yeah, right. Right now, we're a little distraught.
Some, there will be some degree of mechanical ability to pump water out, but, so we're trying to attack it from both angles. One is it should gravity drain. In the event that it doesn't, or any of the low pits, like I said, elevator pits or pumps in the basement, it will also pump. Very, very similar to the, the Garfield garage, something we've actually gone down and looked at.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Brian, I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Council.
Now, it's Rule 34.
Rule 34, public comment pursuant to Chapter 402 of the Acts of 1965.
So anyone that's willing to come up, that wants to come up to speak, please give your name, number. Must be a resident of Revere. And your name, your address, and the motion you'll be speaking on. Ms. Curran?
Barney Curran, 20 Barrett Street. I'm commenting on Counselor Agenzio. I'm all for it. The more they take away grass and trees, the more flooding we have. ADUs are not going to help us. I think we need to come in compliance with the ADUs we have first. We have thousands of them. Some are on the books, some are being taxed already, and I think that we should get a figure for the state of what we already did with ADUs, because we've done a lot. We're not getting credit for it. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Back to the regular order of business. Madam Clerk?
Calendar item number six. Petition submitted by National Grid to install a pole across from 55 Walnut Ave, beginning at a point approximately 134 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Shirley Ave and Walnut Ave, and continuing approximately 17 feet in an east direction.
Anyone here from National Grid?
I'm on now.
Ms. President.
Counselor.
On the motion. Ms. President, I know we had the gentleman from here, from National Grid here last, two weeks ago, and I gave him my card, I asked him to call me regarding this location, and nobody has ever called me. No messages, no nothing. So as far as I'm concerned, we either keep it on the table or shoot it down. I'm not happy with what they want to do here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other councilors?
Mr. President?
Counselor Cogliandro?
I move to place all of these National Grid motions on file, please.
Is that the will of the body?
No.
No.
Mr. President, I have Agonist Street that they need underground electricity, and we're holding them up. I think that we need to do this. So, since our last meeting, I did get a call from Tammy Suparito, and they did fix, I think they fixed, I would say, seven lights, streetlights, and they fixed the light that you and I put in.
Yep.
So it's really bright across from Luigi's, to go across from Luigi's. They did put a couple of poles back on Winthrop Parkway. They fixed a couple of streetlights that were out in major intersections. So, you know, what she said to me was that they're really shot-handed, and that's what's going on, that they can't get the bodies to do, do, you know, what they're supposed to do. But, I mean, four months is a long time for a streetlight to be out.
Agreed.
So, and I did call the emergency line the next day, Tuesday, but she, she, you know, oversaw that, so. But I would really like to pass nine.
Thank you, Counselor.
If we could. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that I'm always the one that tries to defend National Grid, but I'm not really trying to defend National Grid. I'm trying to defend the fact that we really don't have the authority to stop utilities. There's, there's a, there's an organization that we have to follow the utilities laws here, and we're, we're reaching that point where, you know, it's great to say, let's not do this, and, you know, number one, we're, we're keeping people from getting power to their new houses or whatever we're doing when we stop these things, and, and I'm against that. So, I mean, we've, we've had probably the worst storms lately with all these windstorms. It's going to delay things. I mean, it's just, you know, you can't get the people, and, and even if you had all the people, the full staff, it's still not enough. You got, I think we had like 15 telephone poles fall down on Route 1 the other day, up, up near Walnut Street. So, I mean, at some point, we've got to be a little more flexible, and when we can put pressure. Now, that, that young man, he probably went and got a job in a supermarket, because if I was him, that's what I would do. You know, he probably makes 40,000 a year, and we're torturing him. It, it's just not fair. And I spoke to the higher-ups, I spoke to Tammy Suparito, and, and, and I said, can we try to be a little more communicative? But they don't really have to be. I mean, that's what the bottom line is. If she goes to her bosses, she'll be out of a job. She'll say, hey, they want us to communicate better with the city council. Say, go get it, you know, get lost. So, there's a, there's a breaking point here where we've got to be reasonable about this, and I would ask that we do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hara Mio?
Mr. President, believe it or not, I agree with Tony Zambudo on some stuff. Wow, look at that. It's Lenten season, that's what it is.
It's your haircut.
But, but the, yeah, no kidding. But, that's right. But the reality is that, you know, our duty is to ensure that the residents that watch us at home have access to public utilities, electricity being a very important one, for a variety of reasons. A lot of folks use it for heating, of course, cooking, and then just to keep the lights on in their home. And so, what I would propose, maybe, I don't know, procedurally, maybe we have to wait till the next council meeting, is I think the best way that we're going to be able to leverage our position as a city is to go through the mayor and ask the mayor to set up a meeting with whoever, the regional VP of, of National Grid or something, to talk a little bit about our issues. And I don't know who needs to be in this meeting, but, you know, maybe one of the committee, the, the folks who are on the Committee on Public Works, maybe, can be there so we can avoid a quorum, a quorum issue. But I just think that us, 11, as powerful as, and mighty as we are, are going to need some help from the mayor on this, and, and I think we should ask him to help us leverage that meeting with, with the, with the powers that be.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cogliandro?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I agree with a lot of what was said. I do understand that we need services, especially for new homes and buildings and whatnot, and we have to improve electricity in areas. I, I totally understand that. My, I got a phone call from, what's his name, today, to let me know about the next meeting, when he's going to have two, they're going to be outputting two, two requests for Ward 3. I got nothing today. And my issue is this: we do have a responsibility, I do agree with both Counselors Zambudo and Counselor Hara Mio, we do have a responsibility, but in the same breath, we also have a responsibility in, to, to provide information about what kind of work is going to be done, how long this work is going to take. And I don't, I don't think anybody up here would disagree with me that National Grid subcontractors don't do the best job cleaning up after themselves when they repave something, usually at Bose, or, I mean, if I told you how many people have lawsuits against National Grid right now for tripping on areas that their subcontractors did, you guys would probably hit the floor. And that's my issue, is I, I want to know the work that's being done. Gage Ave is this big, there's parking on both sides of the street, there was a water main break there, and you couldn't even get by. No, obviously, the DPW is going to do their job, but that's what I'm concerned about, quality of life. It's all revol, it's all involved with, with everything that goes on with National Grid doing work there. And in this case, the one that we have on the agenda tonight is for a new two-family home that's being built there. So I don't think this is hurting anybody, but I've been saying it all along, and I'm pretty sure that guy's not here because of me, from what I said last week, but I just want information, I want it in a timely manner, because when we don't know, we look stupid. That's the bottom line. If someone calls me and said, what's going on over here? You know, it's the first time I'm hearing about it. Well, why? You're the counselor. We should have the information about this. I would, I would change my placing on file to tabling to the next meeting. That's what I would like to do, because I want more information about what's going on in my ward. End of story. No disrespect to anybody, you guys made valid, valid points. We absolutely need utilities, we need this stuff. But I would ask the council to place these on file. Counselor McKenna, if you want to vote on yours tonight, absolutely. I know what I'm going to do with mine. Ward, everybody else, you know, you choose for your wards, but that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk, let's call these in order, and we'll allow the ward councilors to do what they want to do. Thank you.
So, calendar item number six, a petition submitted by National Grid, this is relative to the, to 55 Walnut.
Motion table.
Motion to table, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number eight, petition submitted by National Grid to install approximately 10 feet of 2- to 4-inch conduit from existing pole 2274-0 to private property to provide a permanent overhead to underground siphon service at 130 Hitchborne Street.
Motion to table, Mr. President.
Motion to table, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number eight, petition submitted by National Grid to install approximately 10 feet of 2- to 4-inch conduit from existing pole 2274-0 to private property to provide a permanent overhead to underground siphon service at 73 Gage Ave.
Motion to table, Mr. President.
Motion to table, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number nine, petition submitted by National Grid to install approximately 60 feet of 1- to 3-inch underground conduit from existing pole 3919-0 to provide a permanent overhead to underground siphon service at 73 Gage Ave.
Motion to table.
Motion to table, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number nine, petition submitted by National Grid to install approximately 60 feet of 1- to 4-inch underground conduit from existing pole number 306 at the corner of Agneus Ave and Broad Sound Ave to provide a permanent overhead to underground siphon service for 3 Agneus Ave.
Counselor McKenna?
Motion to pass, please.
Motion for favorable vote, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Next up is the zoning subcommittee report.
Counselor Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. As we all know, the zoning subcommittee met at 5 o'clock this evening. We had four items up. We'll start with 24-269, Mechanical Parking Ordinance, that was voted out favorably, would ask for a roll call.
Ordered on a second reading?
Oh, I apologize.
Ordered on a third and final reading? Madam Clerk?
Roll call for engrossment and ordainment. Shall the City Council approve an ordinance repealing the definition and use of mechanical parking systems? Counselor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guerino-Swaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hara Mio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
No.
No, and Counsel President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained.
That was also voted out favorably. I ask for a roll call.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested for 12 furlong drives, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review? Counselor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guerino-Swaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
No.
No, Counselor Hara Mio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Hesitantly, yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review.
Next up is 25-043, Nicholas Dare, 375 Broadway, requesting a special permit. This was for 30 Campbell Ave. This was also voted out favorably. I would ask for a roll call.
Madam Clerk?
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested for 30 Campbell Ave, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review? Counselor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guerino-Swaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hara Mio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review.
Last but not least, 25-042, Edwin Baller, 48 Derby Road, Revere, requesting a special permit for a mixed-use two-story restaurant on 63-64 Revere Beach Boulevard. This was also voted out favorably, and I would ask for a roll call.
Madam Clerk, roll call the members.
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested for 63-64 Revere Beach Boulevard, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review? Counselor Agenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guerino-Swaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hara Mio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted. Calendar item number 14, motion presented by Counselor Kelly, that the City Council requests the city solicitor to draft a home rule petition for the purpose of modifying the zoning act as it relates to accessory dwelling units by allowing the city of Revere to maintain specific provisions of its local ordinance, including but not limited to parking requirements and location restrictions deemed essential to safeguard public welfare, citizen safety, and the character of an already congested and overdeveloped community, provided the city continues to support ADU development in line with the state's housing goals.
Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is going to take a couple of minutes to unpack, and in fact, I'm going to submit a substitute motion because after really digging into this, I don't think it's the right thing to do to try to modify. I think what we really want to do here is seek an exemption. So, under Article 89 of our state constitution, we're granted the right to tailor laws to Revere's unique needs to govern in our residents' best interests by way of home rule petition. After a careful review with us, I'm going to actually, oh, okay, never mind. So, I'm asking us basically for an exemption by way of home rule petition from Section 8 of the Affordable Homes Act on accessory dwelling units and allow us to keep our ordinance under Title 17 rather than seeking a modification. My reasons for this are as follows. Our ADU ordinance is common sense approach, which fits our unique needs and the unique dynamics of our city. For example, we require owner occupancy for two years. The state has no such requirement. We prohibit enlargements to the principal dwelling. The state allows them. We restrict ADUs to single-family homes and only one, allow one ADU per dwelling. The state allows them on any principal dwelling, single families, multifamilies, even town homes, and even allows multiple ADUs for one principal dwelling by special permit. Let's keep in mind that our ADU ordinance was intended to help single-family homeowners, many of which are senior citizens who had unpermitted in-law apartments that were built decades ago. It allows these units to remain, bringing them up to code and only requires one off-street parking spot as, instead of the normal required two spaces. However, the state has a heavy-handed, one-size-fits-all approach, which results in an ADU law that will be disproportionately applied across the Commonwealth. This means Revere will be hit much harder than many other cities and towns because the state law says no parking requirements for ADUs located within a half a mile of a quote, "public transit stop." And the state defines a public transit stop to include MBTA bus stops. Because bus stops blanket our city, ADUs in Revere will be allowed to be built everywhere without any off-street parking required. By contrast, towns like Danvers with fewer bus stops will be much less impacted. Our police, fire, ambulatory services are already stretched thin. Congestion and traffic are already pressing concerns, and side streets are already overcrowded because off-street parking is so scarce. Our single-family neighborhoods are under attack. By approving this tonight, we are not asking the state to exempt us from creating additional housing. We are merely asking to keep our common sense approach, protecting our single-family neighborhoods and preserving the quality of life of our residents. I urge my fellow council members to defend our home rule rights and Revere's future by acting now, starting with this request for petition. We're seeing more and more of these mandates from the state, and this petition is our chance to stand up for Revere by saying, "We know what's best for our city." And I also want to include, we're seeing more and more lawsuits by cities and towns in the Commonwealth that are actually suing the state based on the premise of having unfunded mandates. In other words, these mandates are being put into place. We're being required to abide by them, but we're not really getting any funding to bolster our emergency services or infrastructure to support them. And as a side note, I do want to mention, I did mention this to our state delegation, and this exemption is a common sense approach that I hope we can all support tonight. Madam Clerk, can you read the, the substitute motion? Did we, do you want me to?
Sorry, Counselor Kelly. The language discussed, your substitute motion would be as follows, that the city council requests the city solicitor to draft a home rule petition amending the zoning act, exempting the city of Revere from the Commonwealth's zoning requirements relative to accessory dwelling units.
Thank you. And I'd like a vote on that tonight. Thank you.
Any other counselors? Counselor Grino Sawaya?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Counselor Kelly, for doing this. This is, this is a great motion. While the city remains committed to supporting the ADU development in alignment with the state housing goals, it is critical that we maintain the ability to enforce local controls that reflect the unique needs of each neighborhood. So, this, to me, this is a very, very important motion, and thank you for, Counselor Kelly for putting it in.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was going to, thank you, Mr. President. I was going to suggest this go to committee, but now that I hear the motion that it's calling for an opinion, I don't see any reason to send it to committee, so I support it. Then we, then it'll go to committee after it comes back. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? All in favor, all opposed? On the substitute motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 15, motion presented by Counselor Agenzio that the mayor requests the city solicitor and director of planning and community development to explore the feasibility of challenging in court the new ADU regulations set forth by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, specifically lack of parking requirements, allowing ADU construction on homes greater than single-family, allowing ADU construction in flood zones, and considering a bus stop as a transit station.
Counselor Agenzio.
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you to Counselor Kelly. That was an excellent presentation, and I fully support it. Both our motions are slightly different, but they seek to achieve the same goal. I know when this bill was moving through the state legislature, I had heard about the different aspects to it, and I wasn't alarmed at that point. But then, and also in the Revere Journal about two weeks ago, there was a press release by the governor's office. I just want to read a couple of snippets in here. This would allow homeowners the freedom to create an accessory dwelling unit, which can provide more housing options for seniors, creating opportunities for young adults with special needs and looking for more independence. They can be built by right in single-family zoning districts statewide. ADUs can provide supplemental rental income to homeowners and add value to single-family homes. ADUs can have a profound effect for homeowners and their families. They can allow older adults to age in place and remain close to their grandkids and children. ADUs can also offer independent living for young adults with special needs. There was a quote in here by Jesse "Canson" Benenav. ADUs are a gentle tool in the Massachusetts toolbox to address our special, our severe housing shortage. This provision allows homeowners to generate additional income, house loved ones with disabilities, aging family members, young adults who might not otherwise be able to afford to live in the community where they were raised. So, according to this press release, it sounds great, but when Mr. Skorowski spoke two weeks ago, the reality of it seems to be very different. I was under the, under the understanding that it was only single-family homes, and Mr. Skorowski explained, single families, two families, three families are also eligible. The state determining that bus stops were transit stations, in my opinion, you know, that's something that could be challenged. I can't imagine a person in an ADU walking a half a mile, getting on a bus, taking them in a direction that they don't want to go. It was my understanding that they weren't going to be available to be built on, in flood zones. Now, I understand they can be, as long as they're above the, the flood zone level. So, in the parking requirements, they needed to provide one space, but with parking, with bus stops, it's the whole city. It's everywhere in the city. It's, it's every street. So, when I say challenging the court, maybe that can happen. And then Mr. Skorowski also stated that we are allowed to put reasonable restrictions. So, when we do that, I don't know who is going to determine what is reasonable. Is someone from the state agency going to come in and say, and challenge us and say it's not reasonable? Will homeowners, if they're denied, will they be able to challenge us in court? I'd like to know where this challenge would come in and how we are supposed to pass regulations on a very vague determination of reasonable and unreasonable. So, I think if Mr. Attorney Capizzi, and I know Mr. Skorowski seems to want to state something now, and I'd be glad to hear it, we really need to be on top of this. And Counselor Kelly's motion is an excellent one. I don't know how legislators would feel after just passing this thing. I think they believe this is the best thing since sliced bread. I don't know if they would exempt just one city. Hopefully, they would, and, and I'm in favor of it. I hope it goes through, and that's it. And I'm fully in favor of increasing the housing stock, but we're always talking about affordable housing. There's nothing in this that requires any of these ADUs to be affordable. Maybe that's a restriction or something we could do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor.
Good evening, counselors. Sorry if I'm a bit out of breath. I ran from the parking lot. I didn't think I'd make it in time until I heard National Grid was on the agenda, and then I knew I had a few minutes. So, what, I had asked Counselor Zambudo to hold the item that I presented to the council a few weeks back because the state was going to be bringing forth a model bylaw, and they're actually bringing it forward tomorrow. And we'll have a webinar where they're going to talk through the ins and outs. But I agree with you, Counselor, that this question of what is a reasonable regulation is somewhat murky, although I would suggest that the, the more potentially productive path forward, I'm not entirely convinced a home rule petition, particularly so soon after this legislation had been passed, would be fruitful at the State House, but nor, nor do I think challenging in court as the municipality might be the right way to go. But I think what we could do, and what I'm committed to doing with everyone on the council here, is putting forth a set of, as Counselor Kelly mentioned, common sense, reasonable regulations of what we all thought ADU development was going to look like, and putting that and codifying that within our ordinance. And I think there are certain things that are clear within the regulations that we would have to remove if we didn't want, let's take it, you know, call it the full-on fight mode, where we oppose everything that they're for. But I do think there are certain things, like the homeownership aspect, if we were to remove that, and a few other things that are clearly aligned with the regulations, but then pushed back in other areas. Like, I think it's completely unreasonable to assume we would want, as I know it's been discussed, basement apartments underneath the base flood elevation. You could make an argument that that would be allowed as it stands today if we didn't change our ordinance, but I feel like that's an area where we could very clearly push back. And I would consider it quite reasonable to assume that we'd want our residents to live above the area in which it would flood in a 100-year flood. So, I think there are areas like that where we can push back. I also think we've, we've considered the question of it has to be allowed by right in all single-family zoning districts. If you look at our use table, the GB district is considered a single-family zoning district. The NB district is considered a single-family, all of our districts are, but are they all really? And are there areas that we could change that Y to an N? Because we're not really looking to promote single-family development on Shirley Avenue, for example, or in Beauchamp Square. If we change that Y to an N, that actually constrains the amount of areas where ADUs would need to be allowed by right. And then we could also talk through the parking piece as well. I guess what I would ultimately ask for is a little bit of patience so we can take in what those bylaws, the model bylaw tells us tomorrow, and then kind of work with all of you on crafting something that is common sense, that we could all move forward thinking, this is what we all anticipated. And I think everyone at the table that I've spoken to, even if they're opposed to this state mandate, is in theory on board with the idea of promoting the right kind of common sense ADU legislation. So, I think we can build something that could be defensible in court. But I think usually the way this would come out to directly address your question, Counselor, would be, we, we would face a challenging court by somebody who thinks we are acting against the, the state's regulations. And that's probably where most of the fights would happen on this, both here and throughout the Commonwealth. It's more of like a reactive method as opposed to us going forward to the courts, which I think this is a more deliberate approach that could get us to where we want to be.
Thank you, Tom. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom, thanks for being here. You read my mind. I watched the planning board meeting from the other night, and they spoke specifically about the Broadway area. If you were concerned about ADUs before, and then you watched the planning board meeting, you're even more concerned now. So, that was one of my questions. Is that, were you hinting at that's something we can alter and with the GB and areas like Broadway?
Right. So, any, anywhere on the use table that currently is a Y for single-family homeownership or single-family development, we would have to allow ADUs by right. But if we change that Y to an N in certain districts, and realistically, we're not building single-family homes on Broadway, right, or Beauchamp Square, or, you know, the, the TED district. So, I think if we change those Ys to an N, which is realistically what they are today, that actually constrains the amount of districts that are opened up to this in the first place. And then we can also talk through other things, like if, if you have a town home right now and you want to build an ADU theoretically, you could do it, but you also would need to build a sprinkler system. And is that really possible or feasible for the average person? And it probably makes a development like this unrealistic. So, there's what is on paper and what is in reality going to happen. I think once we get down to a common sense set of legislation, I think we'll be able to weed out a lot of that and have a better sense of where this is headed and maybe get rid of some of the doom and gloom, which is understandable right now, but I think doesn't have to happen with this.
Thank you, Tom. Counselor Agenzio.
Thank you. So, Mr. Skorowski, I'm still confused as to who is going to determine that it's unreasonable. We, we pass regulation, we'll have an ordinance, so if somebody has denied a permit, they would challenge us based on what they feel is unreasonable. The state isn't going to review our ordinance and then come and give us a...
That's correct. Unlike the MBTA communities where we got a judgment handed down from the state that affected funding that we would receive, this would all be handled in the courts. I imagine what will ultimately happen is there'll be one or two test cases that will go to the SJC that would then determine sort of what those lines of reasonableness are, because ultimately, this is a Dover Amendment-protected item, just like any other Dover Amendment-protected zoning issue. It got worked out in the courts exactly what the sort of guardrails are of what's in, what's out in terms of reasonableness. So, I think we'll learn that in time as it's developed through the courts.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Herramio.
Mr. President, I, I just think with the model ordinance coming tomorrow, that we might be jumping the gun on this. I understand the intent here, and I appreciate my colleagues' concerns around this issue. I just think that, you know, I know that our, our partners in the legislature have put a lot of thought into this, and we want to make sure that, you know, we at least get to see this model ordinance, and that way we can work with our, the Director of Economic Development, Planning and Economic Development, on what's the right fit for the city of Revere. And if the right fit is to further restrict the ordinance, or the law, then so be it. But at the very least, we should give the administration and the legislature the grace to see this model ordinance. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor, Counselor Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, a couple of things. So, regarding the press release that Counselor Agenzio read, I just want to, I just want to reiterate, we do have an ordinance on the books that speaks to ADUs. They, they are allowed right now, and it's our 17.25. So, we do have an ordinance on the books. So, we can allow for all of those things, but do it in a way that works for our city. And the other thing I want to bring up is that I don't think we're the only city right now. I think Winthrop is actually seeking some modifications right now as well regarding this. And the other thing, in terms of fighting through the courts and kind of restricting some things and all of that, I understand that set, certain setbacks would be required in terms of dimensional requirements and yards and things like that. So, if someone argues, well, that wouldn't apply to a lot, a lot of homes in Revere because of lot sizes, say, we wouldn't have all the setbacks, and so there, there wouldn't be many of those allowed. Could those individuals who want to build an ADU attached to a primary residence then be allowed to go before the ZBA and get variances for those setbacks? Okay. So, so this is why, rather than, my position is, rather than try to come up with modifications and try to piecemeal this, I really think it's better for us to say, look, we have something on the books. We're not trying to block the creation of these ADUs. We do have an ordinance on the books. It's reasonable, and it works for our city. The other thing is, in terms of waiting to Counselor Herramio's point, we have this, I believe, it's, it's, so it's Section 8 in the MBTA community's law, which does outline the nuts and bolts of this. We've got the major components of this. What's coming out tomorrow are just suggested guidelines, correct? So, we have the meat and potatoes, the nuts and bolts. We, we know how this is going to pan out, correct?
Well, I think the question of reasonableness is, is what's an open item to me, because this will be really the first time the regulators will show us what their definition of what's reasonable is. So, I'm reserving judgment, although there is part of me that wonders about that, and we're kind of seeing all the framework out there today. So, I think all we can do is wait until, or all I'm asking for us to do is wait until tomorrow, and then we can see, okay, if that's exactly what it's telling us already, then we, some folks might not think there's a path forward, others might think there is, and we could work reasonably on pushing back where we want to and not pushing back in other areas where it's really clearly defined how we would be working against the, the state's regulations. I'm aware that Winthrop is challenging, I'm aware they're challenging MBTA communities as well, and their state funding has been decimated. And I think in this current fiscal environment, we should consider the impact of similar reactions. So, unlike MBTA communities, there is not a clear... So, unlike MBTA communities, there is not a clear funding, you know, they wouldn't remove funding if we did not comply, but I do worry about the message we might be sending when we are quite reliant on state funding and the partnership with the state more generally.
Thank you, Tom. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom, is there any, is there a limit on how many ADUs we can have in the City of Revere?
There is not a limit, although the statement that was made that you could have multiple ADUs on your property is certainly something we could prohibit. We could leave it to one per property.
Okay. I just think that if we lose control of this, I can just picture Revere looking like New York City. It's just, it's incredible what we have to endure for our city, you know. I'm just, I'm still not happy with this at all. So, I'll wait until tomorrow and see what we can do, but, and so there's no limit. So, even like Barney Corin came up and said that there are more ADUs in the city that we haven't, they're not accountable. So, I was just wondering.
There is not a limit, although I would say, if I could ask the Counselor a question, how many folks on the Council would consider building an ADU on their property just to show a hands? No? Okay. So, I do think there is this element of reality versus what's in the plan in the zoning. So, yes, we are opening it up theoretically, but in practice, most people would prefer still not to have an ADU on their property. And the other thing I would say is, I think actually, this will more disproportionately impact communities like Ipswich, communities like Newbury Port, further out where you have a lot more property to work with, and you can build a detached dwelling unit. I think setbacks are going to constrain this a lot more in practice than we think it actually will. I think there is going to be in practice use in ADUs in certain areas, but I think it might be overblown, particularly as we consider our neighbors in more suburban, larger lot size areas.
Thank you, Tom. Okay. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you. So, quality of life does not matter in a city. I mean, the governor's pushing this, and she's not thinking about quality of life, and we're so dense, and we just, she wants us to add more. I just, I think there should be rules and regulations or some compromise or whatever for dense cities to get some leeway than, you know, pushing this, you know. She should work on Danvers and Middleton and Topsfield and leave Revere alone. That's, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly.
Sorry. Thank you for the leeway, Mr. President. So, Tom, I just want to say, do you know the percentage of rental units in this city other than owner occupied? So, I think we're somewhere around 50-something percent owner occupied. So, that, there's a lot of rental, you know, where we have landlords living outside the city. So, to say that they wouldn't want these ADUs to pull in more rent, I don't know if we can say that. And we have a lot of outside property owners living outside of Revere, so that's number one. Number two, in terms of that being a determinant, that we don't really have the land, which is what I was speaking to before, that's why I asked you if they could get variances. And we see variances get approved consistently from the ZBA. So, if this were to go full-blown, I could see people asking for variances from those setbacks, and yes, creating and making these work on the size lots that they have, even though we don't have the sprawling lots that Danvers and, you know, Topsfield has. So, I do, I am convinced that this will disproportionately hurt Revere much more than those other cities, and we've had enough. And the thing is, we build up our housing, and we want to attract more people living here, but we are not bolstering our emergency resources, our ambulatory, our fire, our police, to provide adequate services for our residents. So, we keep beefing up the amount of the population, but we're not beefing up all of those other things that we need to speak to our residents and make sure that their quality of life is maintained at a certain level. So, whatever we need to do, whatever this honorable body decides in terms of which path to take or which option to take, but we have got to make a stand on this, and just, we cannot keep going along with these mandates by the state. We know our city best, and this doesn't fit our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other Counselors? Counselor Cogliano.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say really quickly, great job by Counselor Kelly and Counselor Agenzio. Thank you both for filing these. I just, two things, well, three. One, if there's a fight to be had, we should absolutely fight this, okay? 100%. I think it's absolutely ridiculous that the state would hold funding from a community that doesn't want to adopt something for the betterment of their city. I think it's absolutely ridiculous. That's not your money. That's their money. End of story. Okay? Those are the tax dollars. And I certainly hope that their definition of reasonable means that each community can set their own regulations based on the needs of the city, because if this passes and we're forced to do this, I said it last time, we are in big trouble. Thank you.
Counselor Garino-Swaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a question, and I know you're not going to be able to answer it. I want to know why the Commonwealth did not speak to the individual cities and ask what their thoughts was on something like this. I mean, did they, I don't even think they considered what it would be doing to our infrastructure. So, I think the Commonwealth has the duty to actually speak to all the cities and towns that are in the Commonwealth before making such a huge decision that would impact all the residents that live within each city. And it's just, it's really disheartening. And then for them to take away funding, it's just, it's not a good look on the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other Counselors? Permission to speak from the chair?
Thank you. Tom, I know you stated that there was, there hasn't been nothing set in stone as far as penalties that, cities that are going against this. But you mentioned Ipswich, and Ipswich actually just got hit with losing grants and funding because they went against the MBTA communities. If that, have they, what is we, what, and what is the amounts that we could lose if this?
So, unlike the MBTA communities, this one isn't quite so clear. I wouldn't say outright we would lose amounts, but I think that there are some benefits to pushing back by creating our own reasonable set of regulations that we think could withstand a challenge in the courts, as opposed to actively fighting the state in a more upfront manner. That's just my personal opinion, but I understand the merits of both approaches.
Has there been any talk about a class action, cities and towns getting together and going against the state?
Not that I've heard of.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So, on, this is, we're still on Counselor Agenzio's, right? So, on Counselor Agenzio's motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Counselor Garino-Swaya. Yes. All in favor. All opposed? So ordered.
Counselor Garino-Swaya.
Yes. All in favor. All opposed? So ordered.
Counselor Garino-Swaya.
Yes. All in favor. All opposed? So ordered.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other Counselors? Permission to speak from the chair?
Thank you. Tom, I know you stated that there was, there hasn't been nothing set in stone as far as penalties that, cities that are going against this. But you mentioned Ipswich, and Ipswich actually just got hit with losing grants and funding because they went against the MBTA communities. If that, have they, what is we, what, and what is the amounts that we could lose if this?
So, unlike the MBTA communities, this one isn't quite so clear. I wouldn't say outright we would lose amounts, but I think that there are some benefits to pushing back by creating our own reasonable set of regulations that we think could withstand a challenge in the courts, as opposed to actively fighting the state in a more upfront manner. That's just my personal opinion, but I understand the merits of both approaches.
Has there been any talk about a class action, cities and towns getting together and going against the state?
Not that I've heard of.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. So, on, this is, we're still on Counselor Agenzio's, right? So, on Counselor Agenzio's motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Counselor Garino-Swaya.
Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Counselor Garino-Swaya. Evening, Counselors. Excited to talk to you about something I'm not mandated to talk to you about by the state.